Evening, it's five o'clock and we do have a call. The council meeting is open for business. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Jackson to give us a quick announcement.
If you bow your heads, I'm going to read from the council prayers by the Reverend T. Frank Matthews Chaplin of the City Council of Selma, Alabama. This is prayer number eleven. "Oh God, forasmuch as without Thee we are not able to please see. Mercifully grant to the members of this city council the guidance and direction of Thy Holy Spirit, that we may consider them partially, weigh honestly, and act rightly in accordance with Thy will for us on every matter that may come to us, knowing that without Thy sustain, we can do no good thing. For we access in the name of Jesus Christ for His sake. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Well, Stephanie, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Burke.
President Bowie?
President.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson?
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes. As stated before, we do have a call. The character trait of the man is free activity. Approaching a meeting with a task on an idea from a new perspective. Councilmembers, you have before you the regular October 20th, September jumper. Our ruling corrections, deletion. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular jumper. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Morgen Jackson. In the fall of discussion, roll call, Madam Burke.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the regular jumper was approved. Councilmembers, you have before you the September jumper. We talked eight items on last night. We got eight items to consider for the September jumper. At any time, we'd like to remove an item to discuss separately made. Item number one, to approve the annexation in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine dollars and twenty cents. Item number two, to approve the first degree ultra brand lounge for a liquor license. Item item number three, to approve vacation paid for thirty-four point five hours in an amount of four hundred dollars and fifty-five cents for a amount of license. Item item number four, to approve to enter into a contract to reown the Waco Center. Item item number five, to approve the appetator for a black belt benefit group at a discount rate of five hundred dollars per day for a total of ten weeks beginning in August eighth, twenty-twenty and ending October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Item item number six, to approve uses of the main floor of the Dallas Academy for Hope Academy to approve the waiver of rental fees for Hope Academy with the Academy fee responsible for all utilities and upkeep, amounting to repairs and maintenance. Item item number seven, to approve mirrors to be placed on the Waco Center. And item number eight, to approve revenues for all on our list. That is nineteen twenty approved, the adults in itself in an amount of nine hundred and forty dollars. Councilwoman Thomas, to be transferred to the district mirror now. Councilmembers, you have before you eight items to please to be considered for the September jumper. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion on the floor by our Councilwoman Shaw. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Shaw. In the fall of discussion, roll call, Madam Burke.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes, to one through four and six through eight abstain from the prize since I'm a member of Black Brotherhood Group.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, with the exception of the number two, I abstain.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes, and both.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes, and all they have.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Y'all might abstain because I'm not a person.
Okay, all right, the September jumper passed. Councilmembers, you have before you the September tenth minutes, September twenty-fourth, and also you received the September thirtieth minute on today via email. At this time, would you feel comfortable to move forward with all three sets of which you'd like to carry the September thirtieth minute holders for the next council meeting?
There goes all the papers, President. Just gather them on. September thirtieth.
September thirtieth. Councilmembers?
Yes, sir.
We have all the care rolls to the next council meeting. Yes, sir. All right, thank you. We will have a care roll to the next council meeting. Now, I know we have the announcements, but before we move to the announcement, I know Councilwoman Bowlin has to go to a football game.
Yep, thank you so much for that consideration, President Bowie. It's to get us wrapped up their season. I don't want to miss the last game with our P B career. Hopefully they'll understand that. As my boy hopefully be paying nose guard before we get a victory tonight. So we'll see what happens.
Okay, first off, let me thank the committee who served for the interview with the fire chief. We had three work candidates that were finalized for the top post of the fire chief. The three were N R Chief Graham, who's currently serving as N R Chief, Captain Mason, and Captain Evans. All three names that we must go on tonight. One out of three candidates to appoint as N R chief of fire chief. As you know, that's one of the former staff of council, the fire chief. And also, you know, when we're doing a pledge here, I think we probably the best managers that we also have is N R Assistant Fire Chief as well as Assistant Police Chief. And we will start at Police Chief in the start process on tomorrow at five o'clock. At this time, do I have a motion on the floor to a name for the appointment of N R chief? Was it Graham, Mason, or myself?
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Do I have a motion on the floor for recognition for the next fire chief?
I'd like to make a recommendation.
Go ahead.
For N R Chief Grant.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Shaw. In the fall of discussion, roll call.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Congratulations to you, Graham.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you for your twenty-four years of service. I think you've been with us twenty-four years.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much for your service.
October seventeenth is actually twenty-four years of the Selma Fire Department. So I'm working hard, moving up to the next step. Got to the Assistant Chief position and currently working as the Interim Chief until the mine being up. Have pointed me to the fire chief and I appreciate it very much. I'm gonna work very, very hard in this position. We've got a lot of work to do, so it's not gonna stop. Keep pushing forward.
We have Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Shaw.
Chief Graham, thank you so much. I attended almost all of the interviews and out of the ones that I attended, you gave the best interview. You had a strategic plan and I look forward to implementing the things that you say that you would. You know, I have a best interest over there with the fire station that's closed.
We both.
We both do. And I look forward to you doing those things that you said that you were going to do before you were just hired. I will be looking forward to that. I will be looking forward to you doing great things for all of the fire stations and all of the men and the women of the Selma Fire Department. So, did you get your twenty-year tenure?
Yes, ma'am.
You did, okay. All right, so thank you for twenty-four years.
All right. Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilwoman Shaw.
Chief Graham, thank you for your service thus far. I think that you now the vote of the council members present is a vote of confidence in your leadership and thank you for your service to this point and we look forward to great things from you. All right, Councilwoman Shaw.
Yeah, Chief, I too attended all the interviews and all the candidates with all the time. But the fact that you serve as the Assistant Chief, the fact that you serve as the Interim Chief, I saw a reason that you should not be elevated to the position of Chief. Now, if there's a condition for now, you must serve another four or five years. And of course, to my colleagues, I hope that among those candidates that interviewed and acted, you have Assistant Chief can be selected.
Yes, I agree. All right, Councilwoman Morgen.
Chief, I want to thank you for your painful years of service and also I serve as on the Committee of Public Safety. That is one I have no more identity. And I think that we select you as the Chief of Fire Chief of the City of Selma to make sure that the citizen gets the service that they need for the City of Selma.
All right, ma'am. I will work there.
Congratulations, Chief. I'm glad you finally got that position again. Warbling resident and sure to appreciate all your work and hard efforts. You put both as community service, doing the things you do in Lions Club and those kind of places as well as what you've done with the department. Heard great things about what you've been doing from others out there, your peers as well. So it's being noticed by the citizenry and I appreciate your efforts and again, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Congratulations, Chief. You know, I can't believe I wasn't here to vote you in, but you know what? I want to vote my host for the Chief, Chief Graham.
Okay, thank you.
I brought a keg to celebrate. So, anyway.
That's always the last time I was late, but anyway, so let me go and try and make sure you get the votes.
Okay.
Also, Chief Graham, look forward to workforce development partnership with the City of Selma that we talked about in the approval of firefighters. I think it's a rare thing to have those opportunities.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. I'd like to say, Ms. Benjamin, we have hired another employee with the Fire Department. He's come back. He actually was working over in Prattville, firefighter Jason Davis. And he has returned back to the fire department, so I'm still working on another certified person right now as we speak. I do want to say that the five recruits that we do have in Prattville right now, it's going through recruits. They're doing very well. They're on top of class. They're making pays. And they're doing very well in their physical agility. They just got past their consumption course, which is a very difficult physical part of the process of the training. So it's now downhill for them. So we're gonna be looking forward for them to graduate on November twenty-second.
My birthday. I love my birthday. That's a case, nobody do. But thank you for that update I had in private because I know you said a possible eight, but five is good. And I know you're probably working on the extra three that you talked about. And then, is Jason plus one or is he included in the eight or nine?
He's included in, well, I'm one of the higher ten.
Okay.
Total. We've got a lot of moves that we've got to do within the department and we've got those positions put in place. As those individuals move in, move into place, it's gonna take a little bit of time, but I'm looking towards trying to get stationed by some back there for sure.
You also be had a young man that retired recently. Did he come back from Montgomery or Thomas?
Thomas Wilson. He actually was part-time position that was available for him to take. And he is returning back. He's retired, more part-time position. I've got ten more part-time positions while we're gonna be looking at as well to help out.
Councilman Randolph, would you like to pass your vote?
Yeah, I'd like to vote yes.
All right, cheers for that, also, you're now a vote of confidence. Thank you again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief. Thanks for our announcements before we go around. For your announcement, I'm gonna ask Dr. Williams, Superintendent of the Southern City Schools, Police Control. As usual, Detective Lee, the Council meetings, Police Control, give us a update.
Good evening, son. Can you hear me? Okay. Testing. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking time to have me this evening. You are getting a couple of handouts while you're getting that. Just a couple of reminders. First of all, this is Bowie and Prevention Month. October is Bowie and Prevention Month, so please check out our social media and websites to look at the great activities that our scholars are participating in. And October is also Principal Appreciation Month, so show our principals some love if you get a chance. They are extremely hardworking, dedicated professionals that keep our schools going. So please celebrate them and show them some love if you get an opportunity. You are getting two different sheets tonight. The first one is Keeping Up with Selma City Schools, which is just our newsletter. The first information on here is just our celebration of moving from intervention to performance excellence. We were in state intervention when I assumed this position in two thousand seventeen and our state report card at that time contained three Fs. Our highest school grade was a seventy-six and our district grade was a sixty-eight. We were a D. To date, we are moving and moving in the right direction. And I'm super excited to report once again, we have no Fs. That's always a great thing. Our highest school grade is now an eighty-eight, a very solid B. And instead of having three Fs, we have three Bs this year. So we are super excited about the progress that our schools are making. The other sheet that you have just details the three-year progression that we've made and also shows the amount of growth that we've attained each year as we move forward with report card grades. So we are super excited about that progress and look forward to continuing to make that same type of progress. The next piece on your newsletter is our Performance Excellence Visit. Last year, we were awarded the Pathway to Performance Excellence Award, which is an award given by the Alabama Performance Excellence Program using the Baldridge Framework. If you're familiar with Malcolm Baldridge Framework for Performance Excellence. So we were awarded the Pathway last year and this year we've applied for the Tier One Award and we are excited to be midway through that process. So next week, we will have a visit from a team to just come and dig a little deeper with the application that we submitted, do some interviews and some site visits and looking forward to working with them so that we can move forward with that Performance Excellence piece. There are four different levels of recognition for Performance Excellence. And as I stated, we were awarded the Pathway last year and this year the Tier One, which is the Commitment to Performance Excellence. And then there's also Towards Performance Excellence and then the Alabama Performance Excellence Award. So we are excited about applying for that Tier One Award. And then finally, we are excited that RB Hudson Steam Academy was awarded the Disney Junior Grant. And this is actually a grant from Disney that gives us access to materials and lesson plans, choreography, music, and so forth, so that our scholars at RB Hudson Steam Academy can produce the Lion King this spring. And so we'll be giving you more information about that. Yes, really a big deal. This is a big deal. And we are really pumped up about it and it's gonna be a school-wide production. We're also collaborating with School of Discovery and Selma High School to ensure that those scholars are involved as well. We want to thank the Selma Chapter of Links for their support in writing the grant and making sure that we had all of our ducks in a row for that grant. So we'll be giving you more information about the play as the dates and so forth become solidified. But again, that Disney grant was a really big lift for our steam program. And you know, steam is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And all components of steam will be used in ensuring that this production is a success. So we're talking about set building and designing. We'll get into the engineering and math concepts and of course, the technology piece in terms of the production, arts, working with not only the music piece, but also the set design and even custom design. So just a great opportunity for our scholars at RB Hudson Steam Academy. And that's all I wanted to share with you all tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. I read the report card when it came with, well, I read it yesterday. I don't know if it came in yesterday, but I read it yesterday in checking the news online. We've come from a long way and we got a long way to go. Long way. This is just my thing, this whole report card thing. And I follow it all the time, way before you, of course. And so I'm looking at those scores from before. I'm looking at the score from before you got here. And I say, my goodness. And then I look at the present scores and if I didn't see the scores, if I didn't see the scores before you got here, I would still be saying, oh, my goodness. But it's progress being made and the two schools were brought out of the F position, which means that's a step forward. All of us have to do our part. Let us know what we need to do. I got a whole group that's ready for Selma High. I didn't want to do the lower level. I wanted to do that particular level.
That's awesome.
I wanted to do the high school.
We're looking at doing some mentorship for our young ladies. Would you be interested in helping with that?
I would be interested in helping with that. And I would be interested also in focusing on in the area of academics. And everybody up here knows that I love the arts. That's a thing for me too. And arts brings, it brings in a whole new world for young people. And critical thinking, I'm glad you said it because the HBCU has just put out, the Apple has just put out the application. And students have to be critical thinkers. They have to be able to analyze things. They have to be able to be competitive. They have to be able to articulate.
To work together.
To work together and communicate. They have to be able to do those things and especially comprehend things and not just memorize things. And those are the things I want to focus on to make sure that they are, we need a superintendent that's gonna stay. The turnaround was great before you got here. They probably had about five or six superintendents before you got here.
I know.
We need a superintendent that's gonna stay. We need all the principals in the right spot. Y'all are shuffling principals around, just like you. You gotta, you gotta get them in the right spot sooner or later. Y'all are shuffling them around each year. People are finding their best fits and all of those kinds of things. So I do appreciate that. I don't know what the team looks like, but thank you for this report card. We got a long way to go.
We do.
Got a long way to go.
But I'm optimistic and I definitely appreciate your willingness to support. That means a lot.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Councilwoman Morgen.
Thank you. Wow, this is great. And I say this all the time and I'll say it again. Education, the most important factor in any area.
Absolutely.
Detroit didn't fall with the decline of the auto industry. It fell, the bomb again with the decline of the education system. And that happens anywhere.
It does, you're right.
You've had erosion. The Wayne C A and the Lanes have done a project with the third grade.
Yeah, Step Up.
Tell us a little bit about the impact.
Yeah, it had a great impact. We're excited about getting started with Step Up Again. It's where we had three-week rotations where third graders from all of our elementary schools worked with mentors and tutors specific to their particular needs. So we were able to personalize it based on areas where they may have been struggling. And they went to the Y one day a week and then the volunteers came to the school two days a week. And just intensive tutoring and support. Sometimes it was homework help if that was what the need was. But either way, each of our scholars has an individual learning plan. So they were able to use that learning plan to assure that they were meeting the child where they were and coming to support them.
And you all asked the Y to extend that to from the third grade to the fourth and fifth grade, too. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And we're looking at this year on how we can serve more scholars. And so we're in the process of getting that started.
Well, and one of the ways that the city can help is we have that lodging fee money. There's, that is the way, that is the program that we can provide for them. Checking with the lead, checking with, to provide service. That the Y is providing a service.
Community service.
It's got community service. We've got the contract that will be doing the Step Up Program for the third, fourth, and fifth graders. So that's.
That'd be great. We absolutely love that support with that. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm not at all surprised about this accomplishment. You know, I too been involved with Selma for a long, long time. And I knew when I sit there and I'm, you're editing. And I knew when they hired you, that they had made the right choice. I wanted to accompany the tools of that choice. So just keep on moving forward with the leadership that you're doing. And there's gonna be nothing, good things coming from the Selma system.
And I can't help but emphasize the fact that it is a team effort. We have some of the hardest-working, most dedicated, committed teachers and leaders that I've ever seen. And so, like I said, it's Thank a Principal Month, Thank a Teacher Too, because they are the boots on the ground and they are what makes this type of progress possible. Their belief that all of our scholars can learn, their commitment towards excellence to ensure that they are planning and collaborating and working with families to meet our scholars where they are. But we appreciate your support.
Detective Lee, I want to say this to you. When you first came in to the city of Selma, I like to, I believe in you and trust in you because you went to the community. You and your team went out into, into the community in my ward. You knew that, y'all went to the houses and knocked on doors and you were letting people know that you were here to make a change in the school area, especially over in Knox, in my area. And I think the families, they love Dr. Currie and she's bringing you the things. So I think Knox is gonna be on the map.
We're gonna be just fine.
Yes.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
Back to the jumper. In announcements for some council members, can I roll?
Just one announcement. On October the third first, we'll have a Halloween carnival as usual, like we always do. Start at five o'clock until eight. Seven after, seven after sports bar and grill. So parents, please bring your kids. Have a lot of fun, train ride, bouncer, smoke cones and popcorns, cotton candy, the whole nine. Y'all a hot dog, hamburgers, and DJ. So, but yeah, it'll be a lot of fun. So on October the third first, Halloween, we'll have a Halloween carnival at the Selma Sports Bar and Grill for the kids.
All right, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Councilwoman Shaw, then Councilwoman Morgen.
The Selma University Radio Fund, that we all participate in on the Saturday. Should have a schedule for the time that you live, but we need to be able to pull out the thirty minutes to mend a supportive voice, encouraging the visiting audience to think about making a monetary contribution to the Selma University. I'm hoping that that radio fund is not be successful. We'll do everything we can to help save Selma University, the very store for HBCU. That school has been a champion for many people of color that have gone on the gap to higher education. So we need to do all we can to help salvage, lack of term, that university and make sure that that university continue to thrive in our community and continue to educate the citizens of this city and its surrounding council. Please, let's be on time and let's do what we can to lend a supportive voice to. Please, let's be on time, and let's do what we can to lend a supportive voice to the efforts of Selma University.
Thank you, Councilman Shorter.
Also, on November the 2nd, at Selma University, they will have like a fun day, which they will have out, the family can bring out that day, they're raising funds, and they're asking the day be a special day that you come out and have events for your families, which they have five partners with the bouncers and Sparky. And I'm asking the citizens of Selma to come out and support that Selma University.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
Oh, it start at 1:00 and at 10:00?
10:00.
Mm-hmm, at 10:00.
I have to announce this. On November 5th at 5:00 PM, we'll have a work for weed and seed workshop. We had our meeting quite some time ago before the list of meetings started. We'll have a workshop on November 5th at the Performance Arts Center, if it's available, at 5:00 PM. And then at 5:45 PM, we'll have our annual stock of violence community gathering, we'll take the banner back. It's sad to say, we'll probably have some names to add to, we'll have some family members to add names to it, but I would venture to say we will not have as many names to add to it. So, if there's any consolation, so we'll have that at 5:45 PM, same date, same venue for our annual day of remembrance and community gathering. Councilwoman, council people, I want you all, if you can, join me, I want to take a mall walk on November, Monday, November 4th, either at 12:00 noon or 5:00 PM, you all let me know what's best for you. I want to go, want you all to walk with me through the mall. You know, we've had, we had an entity to purchase the mall. We have businesses now that are popping up in the mall, and we want them to, it's in Watford. This is why I chose the mall, just in case anybody's wondering why I chose the mall. But I would like for you all to do a mall walk with me, to visit each new entity that's in there, to shake their hand and say that we support you. I was thinking about them having, like we have on their on the river wall, the Christmas tree contest, because the mall is not vibrant like it used to be, the fountain is not working, the water is not coming from the fountain, there is no Santa Claus. The mall, if it's going to survive, and you know malls are a passing thing, and for some reason somebody bought it and they felt like it should come back alive, but malls are a passing thing, all across the nation, they're a passing thing. People are going to outlets where I can go straight in the door and come back out, they're not walking down halls anymore. But this is our mall, so if you all would, take the time with me to walk at 12:00 noon. If you go in there late, you'll see a young kid in the first door, she's doing her thing, she's an entrepreneur, she has the personal ability. You go around the corner where Southern Daily used to be, there's another young lady that opened up, and she's doing wings and, you know, it's like a joint, a burger joint, Philly Steaks and Fish. And if you go on down, reopened, it used to be downtown, it's Leslie Petway, the Petway Party Stop. So, don't go to Party City before you check the mall. Check the mall first before you go to Party City. She has actually reopened right there in the mall, she has party space, if you want to have a birthday party, they have children, slime party, paint party, those little tie-dye party. She reopened in the mall, and if you go on down, you'll see some more people that have gotten inside the mall. So, if you all would join me on November 4th, at either 12:00 noon or 5:00 PM, you all let me know later which one is best for the group, I would like you all to take a mall walk.
Do you have any other questions?
I will.
All right. Any other?
I've got, actually, I've got several to announce, but I've got a lot happening. Um, let's see, next Tuesday, on the 29th, at 6:00, at the YMCA, we're having the Ward Two Weed and Seed Meeting. So, I want all of the Ward Two folks to come out for the Weed and Seed Meeting. Chief, Green, hope that you'll be there with us, anybody who's interested, who's interested in Weed and Seed, council members, you were certainly all invited, that's going to be at the community room at the YMCA at 6:00 next Tuesday. And so, we will get that, and I think that, I think that I'm dragging out the rear on the Weed and Seed meetings for the council, we will have every ward covered, and I did that purposefully, I just waved it purposefully until all the others had been done. Also, on the 31st, we, the Black Bear Benefit Group is having the Monster March, and I got a call from someone involved in the planning of the group, of the little march that I've been working with, and she tells me that, that somebody mentioned that they needed a parade permit. Do we, does anyone call the little monster march, they were having to have a parade permit? This time, they're only going to be marching down one mall. So, what I will do, and they've always had protection, I mean, Lord, we want our children protected, these are EVs that are rocking their costumes and just go to the businesses. So, I'll make a motion for this time that we waive a parade permit if that is an issue. I'm not sure exactly where the issue came from. Chief, I don't know if it's from you, I don't know if that's your policy or if it came from somewhere else, but for whatever it is, just to make sure.
I'm messing with the monster march.
Evidently, and I'm just, I don't know. Let me tell you something, messing with the dogs is one thing, but you know messing with the little children and their little fun holidays, that's the mighty loving thing to do. So, right now, I'm going to make a motion, I'm putting a motion out there, that we waive a parade permit, and that we have security, proper security. Who is that fire chief we just called? We need to make sure we have Sparky, too, every time we hit Sparky in the bouncy house, and we have like...
Just second to the motion.
All right.
Our round second. Any further discussion? Chief, how does that sound to you?
I don't know.
Okay, so you're not messing with the monster march. It's not Chief, Councilwoman?
It's not Chief, well, I'm mighty glad to hear that, Chief, because I think a lot of you, and I think a lot of you...
We know, we know it's not you. Roll call, Matt Clerk.
I don't know who it is.
Roll call, Matt Clerk.
Councilwoman Olene, Councilwoman Yonah.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tan Vigilance.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ashore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
All right, are there any more? Yes, I, oh, go ahead, I think. Yes, I have, I have, so, I have a few more announcements, but these are all good things from the other folks, okay? Um, let's see, the Fall Festival that Michael Johnson's Foundation is, they are working with the YMCA on November 2nd, I believe it starts at 2:00, I'm going just from memory, but anyway, November 2nd, YMCA, Free Fall Festival, not Free Fall, but it's Free Fall Festival. So, anyway, punctuation is important. So, I encourage everybody to go to attend, that's, go and attend, that's going to be a nice event.
What time is it?
I'm thinking it starts at 2:00, if I, that's just going from memory, it will be in the paper. But there are things, we hear Ms. Thompson saying on the radio, talking about it all the time. Let's see, also, on November the 7th, at the Blue Ridge Healthcare on Bell Road, we used to call that Warren Manor, but it's been sold to the Blue Ridge Healthcare, they are having a Fall Festival, and they would like the council people to come, they would also like to invite the community out. They are having activities, and they're going to have popcorn and hot dogs and chips and other goodies, and they're going to have surprises for children, they really want children to come because the residents at the, at the home there, they really just get excited with children. They have asked us to help, and I'm going to make the donation, but I'm also going to pass around a little discretionary, they're not asking for much at all, but just, you know, the little gestures are always nice. So, I wanted to mention that. And finally, this is just a not-so-pleasant thing to have to talk about, and it's been a while since I've had to bring up anything this unpleasant, and I'd love to have to do this. As many pleasant things as this situation in the city has wrought, the animal shelter is always impacting, of course, that's always the bottom where things slop down to. The freezer is full, and y'all know what that means, if I'm going to record it, tell. So, no one is going out there to empty the freezer and have the deceased animals buried. It's causing a health problem, and they're not able to take and help dispose of any other deceased animals that might be brought in or would be brought in, so that needs to be dealt with. If I need to get a contractor to handle that because our city workers aren't taking care of what they need to be, that comes under the review of the Police Department, but Public Works is the one charged with taking care of that aspect of it. And I just, I'm just, we got to do something, and I'm at a loss for what to do. So, usually, when something like that happens, Public Works has been told what they need to do, and they do it. Now, I don't think that the powers that be is really inclined to tell Public Works that they need to do anything about it. So, I suppose I should just get contractors to do that, what you all suggest. I'm coming to my fellow...
I say you probably just get a contractor, contract it out, you know, because that followed by Public Works, and taxpayers, we pay taxes to get stuff done.
Absolutely.
So, you know, it's many things that Public Works does that Mayor Oris traded this guy or whatever they done, but we need to have a contractor go, a contractor, not only to do that, but a contractor to get this garbage off our streets.
Yes, yes, it's all.
We got Public Works money, we can use their budget, have somebody to do this kind of stuff. You seem to have to come to us, you know, with this, because if some of that should be done automatically.
Agreed.
So, I'm asking my colleagues, you know, let's come together and find us a contractor to come here. I think Councilwoman Thomas, someone said they need someone from Montana who was willing to come here, but that you, or somebody?
Yo, we were introduced at, Melissa Power, the city's have issues...
Oh, oh, Councilwoman, go ahead and finish, she said yes. Go ahead and finish.
So, like I say, you know, let's keep, that's a sad situation, you know, crazy school and stuff like that. See what it is, I'm just going to call it is, the mayor trying to sink the boat, he trying to sink the ship before he, before his term ends, and that's just wrong for him to do that. He doing anything that could harm anybody in our city, from the children to the dog. We're going to have to stick together, and citizens, y'all going to have to voice y'all opinion. You know, y'all sit at home, and y'all got it, not getting picked up on the streets, and y'all not saying nothing. Go down there, we need to get us a picket sign or something, because I'm telling you, I, on my street, I live on Fifth Avenue, left of Fifth Avenue, and there's trash all down my street from people putting out their hands and stuff hadn't been picked up, you know. It's just a sad situation, and I was saying, we need to come together as a community and help get all some of this stress off our streets.
All right, thank you, we went through all some trash.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, it's all Public Works, I reckon. I want to say, I want to add to what Councilman Randolph said, okay, so, the garbage that's on the street got there somehow. A human being or some human beings put it there. Everyone up here that I can think of, and I'm looking around the panel, all of you up, all of us have done cleanups, major, major cleanups in our wards, and have found that the next day, or the same, actually, sometimes, what we picked up, what we had just picked up, arrived a few minutes later or 24 hours later. So, you know, as much as I'm always on the other side of the coin, I'm telling you the flip side of this coin, too, it got there by human beings putting it there, dumping, I don't care whether they came out of the county, because we found people at my school from the county coming in because, hey, our school, Cedar Park, had a big old nice dumpster, and so they bring it into town and put it in a dumpster, because Cedar Park had a big old dumpster. They brought some into Shanticlea from other places, and they're like, ooh, the residents have a whole lot of trash, you know, someone brought it in because they had, Shanticlea has a big old dumpster, and it's nice and empty. They brought trash in down at the gas station down from me, right past Chevron, Sonaco. Somebody found a nice, beautiful dumpster, and they began to dump in the dumpster. And I guess it's okay, you find a dumpster to put it in rather than put it on the street, but you're supposed to take your stuff someplace, if you're in the county. There are supposed to be services here to pick up your stuff when you purchase that receptacle, to put it in. You're not supposed to take it to your neighbor's house and put it in the hole that Public Works dug, I'm sorry, that Public Works dug that hole, they were not supposed to dig that hole either. Public Works was not supposed to do that. But they dug this hole, but it's not a garbage hole, it's not a household garbage hole, and the city should be filling all of those holes, should not have done it in the first place. But you should not take your household garbage and put it in your neighbors', on your neighbors' property, on the street, throw McDonald's out of the car, you're not supposed to do that. So, I'm just sharing the other side of this because we know the obvious side of it. The obvious side of it is that there is an order not to pick up, okay? The obvious side is that Public Works is out, and not everyone is actually seen, okay? That's the obvious side of it. But the other side that we sometimes don't talk about is that someone's putting it down. So, how about we stop there also? How about we do both? Okay, how about we work on? All right, are there any more announcements?
Yes, I have.
Councilwoman, come on.
Everyone received, each council person received this from Mrs. Betty S. Bunton. This is in my ward on November the 12th of 2019 at 10:00. The Media Bunton Robinson Foundation of Safe Haven Center, both a 501(c)(2) approved, the foundation will be giving away fruits and apostrophility some weeks. So, everyone that marked on your calendar on November the 12th, 2019 at 10:00, from 10:00 to 12:00, is the Baker Lot located off Ella Anderson and the corner of Paula Street near, right near West Trinity Church. They will be giving away fruits and food at that time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Who's president, that was the end of the interview.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. White? Your final two people. Good evening.
This report reflects the financial status as of year-end September 30 of 2019. I'll start with the sales tax for September, it's up by $69,742 to a total of $833,265. For lodging tax, the total for September is $3,156, up by $6,975. For tobacco tax, the total for September is $28,593, up by $8,126 from the previous YMCA lodging total for the, well, the total for the Brown Wire was $119 in comparison of previous year, September is from $70,994. The other portion... The other portion, twenty-six thousand four sixty-nine. And the whole, the overall total was one forty-five seven thirty-eight. So, overall total approximately about one thousand dollars. Sales tax up by eight thousand seven seventeen to a total of one oh four one fifty-eight. Simplified seller's use tax up by thirty-eight thousand nine sixty to fifty-one thousand eight fifty-eight, which likely that large increase is just reflecting, uh, more sales tax being collected online. For the year-to-date, total revenue received. The total year-to-date revenue received for the year-end was seventeen million two sixty-one one twenty-five. For the month of September, it was one million one eighty-three three twenty-four. Uh, as you recall, the budget and the amount was seventeen million seven sixty, seven fifty-three three fifty-two. We had a shortfall of about approximately four ninety-two two twenty-six. But before we get excited about that, we also still have September revenue that comes in, in October. So, there will be some adjustments. So, the shortfall may be little to maybe nothing. So, um, just keep that in mind when we go back to discussing numbers. Uh, total expenditures for the year, um, year-to-date is fourteen million three forty-one one sixteen. Budget amount was seventeen million five thirty-one two forty-two. So, that resulted in under budget by three million one eighty-three nine twenty-six. Same, well, that is actually close to, true to what it is because, uh, we've pretty much keyed in all of September's expenditures. We may have a few adjustments that need to be made, but we, um, have completed the closeout process. We got a few more adjustments, minor adjustments, but, uh, that's probably actual, um, at, uh, close to actual mountain. Of course, you know, uh, the reason was that was due to the large scale layout for the city employees and the shutdown of expenditures.
Any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Ms. Wade?
Ms. Wade, okay. You finished closeout?
Yes.
That's pretty good in the midst of everything that is out here, is going on. Are you all, um, is the system completely up again?
Yes.
It's completely up. How long has it been?
Uh, we, uh, couple, we still been keying in previous year, and pretty early over to today, but it's up.
And you're still keying in half? How far have you made?
We've finished September 30th, so now we're just in the process of starting opening system makeup of this current fiscal year. Uh, keying in the actual budget. So, we're moving forward into 2020.
Because I don't want to add anything else. You've given me part of what I've asked for. So, whenever you get a chance, and I know it's gonna take a second probably, to give me the rest of that, the detailed stuff that I've asked for, if you're gonna get along.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lushell.
Could you, uh, could you give us a copy of the municipal files? Ask how much we should contribute, how much we have on those municipal files, municipal court?
And municipal court, uh, is on this report after second. That makes us for like twenty-nine. Oh, one second. This page twenty-five and thirty-four. Uh, you see total revenue received, uh, year-to-date was only five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Well, we asked a question, but who made this?
And expenditures, uh, was on this year-to-date sixty thousand nine fifty.
Okay, you simply answered the question.
Yeah, there's a lot of fines that hasn't been collected, has there?
Yes, sir.
And municipal court is suffering because people have found guilty of, uh, of municipal, uh, of misdemeanor, and they just walk away.
Pay the fines?
We need to find a way to, uh, have amnesty there. Remember I talked about this two, three years ago? And I think we can, we can get some of this money if we put forth the government. I think us just, by doing everything, just gonna say, well, I think municipal court needs this money. There's a way for us to get it. And I don't think we just need to just let this just go by and by.
Um, one of the things that I had suggested years ago is to get somebody, um, and I, Mayor Evans was, seemed to be all for it, and there was somebody that could come do it, but I can't remember who was the presiding judge yet. They just didn't seem to like, no, it was the magistrate at the time who's not been there for quite some time, didn't like it. Didn't want anybody else coming in and filling with their stuff. But we need to get somebody to do restitution. A restitution roundup, just like we had to do in the DA's office. Many years ago, we had the same thing. It was all plogged up and we just had to get somebody that did restitution recovery. And that's what, as a matter of fact, I have drafted a bill for the Legislative Services to do. Roy Johnson is the DAD, and he asked me to help do a bill to get a, you know, restitution recovery in the district attorney's offices. We got somebody to do restitution recovery and that is, in my rightness, Jackson, that gets money in to the DA's office. It gets money to pay the person to do it. Money into the, and it gets your, and it allows them to make up payments. It's like the judicial services do here. But they get a percentage on top of all that, but you just don't have an extra middle man. It's just an extra person doing that. It's not rocket science. It's not real hard. Even I can do it. I mean, I set it up and showed them how, so it's not a difficult thing. It's statutory, statute law.
Three years ago, actually three years ago, we asked the city attorney, who at the time was checking on, to, uh, look at my government, my government, even I didn't have amnesty thing. And how they did it to recruit some of the mothers that do to municipal courts. And, uh, he came back with that report.
Basically, talking to the.
He came back with this report and he gave nothing about it. You know, I know the municipal courts are third ranked government, but again, still, still, they ask the city itself. And when you have mothers that's supposed to, municipal court, that money's going to the city itself. And I'm sure the police department could very well have used some of that money that is generated through the criminal amnesty in this city. So, once again, I'm asking this city to, let's see how we can impact those outstanding warrants that people have been finding was given by the courts.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Thompson, move on.
Councilwoman, um, look, I concur with you. I actually worked in the municipal court during that time, um, for three, three years. And what we were able to do, um, with JCS Judicial Protection Services was in the board, was in continued communication. So, we would call David, we'd send out letters, we'd follow, we'd place him back on the dock. And what you're asking is for restitution recovery, filing for cost recovery. What you're asking is that you put a body there that's responsible for doing this. Um, the amnesty is, uh, from what I understand, is a little bit different. It is actually there to take the number warrants off the, off the books. Um, so, you come in and you take your warrant. You wouldn't be served or rested on that warrant that day. And some may or may not pay for it, but that's what I thought amnesty was about, and I think it was used. But, uh, we definitely need someone that their focus and primary responsibility, and it could be tied to what they collect, uh, what they actually collect, the percentage of their wages. It could be a contract person or something that we could do with it. Someone needs to have a keen eye on doing that. And, um, when I was there, I'm a small seller, but, um, I won in the state award over five times for number one collection in the order. And that's just because of consistency. And I think once you have the consistency there, that people follow through. It's not the first thing that they're going to think about when they're looking at what's due. And you have to remind them. And so, I'm all for the amnesty program. Let's get some of these old warrants off the book and let's get some of these fines collected. I think that's great.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Thompson, move on. Any other questions from Ms. Wade?
Go ahead, let Ms. Jackson.
Yeah. I have a question. Ms. Wade, um, do you know why we're paying so much to AT&amp;T Mobility? Is it that, is it our home services here? Or, I mean, we used to have cell phones through AT&amp;T. Uh, we currently don't have them, and I'm looking at the payment register. Um, it's over, right, seven, eight thousand dollars that we paid in the month of September. And I'm saying, who has cell phones?
We have, I've requested detailed reports, but have been refused with, uh, with that information. On several occasions, I requested it. So, I don't understand either because there were times where we get these large-scale credits that couldn't be explained just by looking at the details. And I want to try to understand the usage, but I was denied access to that information. So, I couldn't move forward to determine what was really happening. So, I could, I can't really provide you that. I think that'd be a question more for the IT director. But based on what I had, it was, it was not well explained, so I don't have that information for you.
Ms. Wade, just for a further review, um, if you look on page, uh, one of three, the payment register that she just gave us, we have AT&amp;T for thirteen seven, AT&amp;T for three eighty seventeen, and AT&amp;T Mobility for six thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and eight cents. As you recall, uh, when it was presented, with switching over to AT&amp;T, the idea was to provide a cost saving, but I really haven't been able to determine where that is.
One more question.
Yes. Actually, this isn't my original question, but the question will stand big. Who, if you have any idea why you would be denied access to that financial information?
Uh, I sent emails to the IT director and initially she was on board, could give me the information. But all of her requests, all the requests that I had had to go through there, and I guess she just told me she could.
All right. Okay, now, my question for you really is, um, and we're trying to find out ways to be more accountable about fiscal responsibilities. So, I want to, um, be objective and fair to us and fair to our concern and really check out what, what all this would mean. So, I think that it's in truthfulness and disclosure and being able to check out everything. Need to find out how all everything is paid, what all this entails. Approximately, how many checks per pay, per check run or per month do you run? How many, how many checks per month, let's say, go out of this building?
Just a guess, Miss, I would say probably, um, per pay period about two hundred checks. So, you're talking about two to four hundred, um, checks, um.
So, about two hundred to four hundred checks per month. All right, and is that the only way that things are paid for, that purchases are made?
Those, uh, we have a monthly recurring bills, or bills that we get to say that happens all the time. We have.
Such as?
Such as AT&amp;Ts, fire, uh, energy bills, um, we have like center for the men doing public works uniforms, things that we know that we are, yeah. So, we have those. And then we also have contractual services that we have, um, that's including grants and things that they make that are paid based on the contract. And also, you have funding, like she, uh, Councilwoman Jackson asked about institute fund. And that is something that's paid through that waters, sewer water that the city has received. And so, we pay that out of the bond fund money. We have things that comes, come in under our agreement with the engineer first. So, I mean, we have, there are several ways. And like you, like you asked about AT&amp;T Mobility, that's recurring bill, but we have every month.
Um, what about credit card purchases?
Credit card purchases are all paid on purchase orders. So, anything that the council purchased or the department purchased, they usually issue, um, a credit card. There's only two things that are, that are now recurring, and that's one that's mayor does that has iTunes monthly payments on for like seven ninety-nine and one is for like ten ninety-nine, something like that a month. And then there's, um, an application for, um, a score, scoreboard or some type of application that the recreation department uses there with more than like one ninety-nine. Although ninety-nine, it's very small price.
Okay.
But everything else, you last purchase.
Councilwoman.
So, now my original question is gone too. You flipped my mind when you said, we are paying for someone's iTunes? What, what, what does that mean?
It's, um, like you say, I guess, I don't know if he has like extended gigabyte or something and it's through the iTunes or with a cloud or something. And I, I don't know what the details are because I can't see what the details are. But that's a month, that's what we pay our free card bill every month. Those are the only two things that we don't utilize purchasing for because they have, they are recurring bills.
Okay, we have, anything that you need to extend, get some extended, you have to pay for that yourself. So, um, but you can't see that, huh?
Right, I can't see the details of what it actually is.
I don't know what, um, I don't have IT in a box in front of me anymore.
I have a pocket app.
The services I think are extensive and I don't know if this is covered, any of these services are covered in here. You're, you're saying to us, you put, you put a request in to the IT department. They were on board at first and open to give you all of the information you needed to move forward. And then suddenly they were not.
Definitely.
And you cannot move forward on this. Cell phone bills should be at a minimum now.
Okay.
The bill should not increase, it should decrease.
Right.
No one up here has, we have our own personal phones. The bill should not increase, it should decrease. And, and, and those funds, where are they? How are they, hardly being assessed in the, in the budget now? None of this should be a savings.
Um, there's not a savings per savings based on what I, I can tell.
It seems like things have gone up and not down.
I think you need the IT director to be here to explain something. Because like I said before, initially there were credits and then the credits went away. And it, it just didn't add up. There was no explanation of why the credits were, where, that I could decipher why. Why we have these huge credits and then we still start getting low bills. So, I don't know how the save and apply and what happened in terms of the cell phones and the extra cell phones and that information. I don't, I'm just trying to keep track.
Y'all, I suggest we pull this out and start with the, the iTunes.
And then make the, we can fix it.
Pull your information out and start with it.
I think, I think we need to get the iTunes, add the AT&amp;T paper here and the iTunes paper.
Yeah, as, as we go about the budget process, um, these are the things that we need to know. So, thank you, um, AT&amp;T representative. By the time we make it to AT&amp;T, uh, Mr. President or whatever is representing them by, we need a representative here to talk to us.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yeah, uh, Ms. Wade, uh, they might have talked about this already in the workshop yesterday. But the, uh, some of the guys that, that Public Works is saying they got a thousand hours of vacation.
Yeah, we did.
But anyway, uh, uh, we might want to pull out of managed, I don't know when it was, but, uh, the council voted something about three hundred hours, uh, for employees. If not, we need to, in the near future, we need to put a cap on it, you can carry a load.
I think it was largely about sick time. A large amount of sick time, but they, you mean, so you also have vacation time. There is a cap on vacation. But I don't know who's in, uh, each, each artist.
I, I don't know.
It is, I was thinking before.
I remember the council voting on something about. I remember the council voting on something about we need some hours. I don't know, uh, because we had a, uh, we had a, a, a guy, he was retired. And he had so many, he had a bunch of vacation days. He wanted all of the money.
Well, why can't you just regulate like the state?
Yeah, because, because it, it, it don't make no sense nobody have a thousand hours. Because you know they have, some, some of these folk not coming to work and still getting paid and, and all that old crooked stuff going on. But, uh, we, we need to take a look at that. You know, we can put a cap on three hundred hours. Once you get three hundred hours, you just lose hours, just lose time, you know? Because at, at my job, I get five weeks a year. If only you use my five weeks for the year and a year, then what? They gone.
Because I know everybody at the state, you can only carry four hundred eighty days. Everything has to go on the air, you know?
So, so we need, we might, we might have quite about something like that.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Randolph comments, he always does, so he can get, um, up to speed on, uh, the work session just in case he needs to vote on something. It's kind of like college money, cause to get the notes. When he told me that, I asked him how far back was it? Uh, because if it doesn't exist, we can't go backwards on this one, but we can go forward. And, um, and it's quite some time ago, um, I don't even know who was mayor when you were saying who was possibly mayor when it happened, what administration it was. But I also asked you, you might not have gotten a chance to get with Madam Clerk to see if she can pull those up. Uh, I think you told me the number was three hundred and twenty hours. And if it already exists and it has, it has been approved, then we can go on that. And, and she, uh, Madam Treasurer has something that's already established. Uh, there's already a cap on it. And perhaps people don't just put it in because they don't feel, they don't feel like, um, no one knows what happened a couple of administrations ago. Or perhaps they just don't know and so, and somebody said, hey, let it roll over, let it ride.
And I, I'm not really sure if some public works employees are aware that their remaining vacation time actively can go towards their retirement time. So, I don't know if they taking that into consideration as they're using it, that they, they use it, you know, more than.
Can I, can I suggest, if it's authorized to, Ms. Wade, to have a seminar workshop to inform some of the workers that they can carry that vacation time over before retiring?
Yeah, we'll have to come see the mayor.
That's what I'm saying, I would put it in writing too.
I was gonna ask Madam, Madam Clerk if you would put in your notes, so please, um, look for that. Um, Councilman Randolph last night as we were talking, I was feeling him and seemed to believe that three hundred and twenty was already voted on quite some time ago, a very long time ago. If you could put that in your search bar and let us know if you come up with anything or not.
Madam Clerk, I, I also take the person's name off, off, off the air who's retired or whatever.
If that may help you in something.
Yeah.
And we're, um, looking at annual leave hours upon retirement, the annual leave.
No, no, it's, uh, total vacation time.
Total.
That's what I'm saying, I don't have a personal. And may have, I mean, that personal.
And it's in conflict with some things that were already done, actions that were already.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I just wanted to, um, say that as I, um, got a chance, opportunity last evening to look over their report that was presented by Councilwoman Thomas, great, great job in doing it. I noticed that, um, there were actually some workers coming in during the week. Um, and so, I need to know, or they're, they're not using vacation times. They, we recall, um, there was one that did forty hours work, but it was actually sixteen hours work and twenty-four hours vacation time. I noticed day-to-day operations that we need to ask if we're paying for them to work, what are they doing? Because if they're in working or on the clock and they're just sitting at the office, that's not considered work. But if they're going out and picking up on those days that are broken, um, or if they're doing actual public works hours, then I understand that. But if they just come in because I don't want to use the three days this week, but I'm not going to do anything, I'm sitting in the yard for sixteen hours this week, then that's not appropriate.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So, Mr. President, if you please make a memo, uh, we're paying those funds. It's over day-to-day operations. But if you're getting paid for hours of work, then you need to actually work.
All right. Any other questions from this way?
There's just five things I kind of want to give financial update on, so you're aware of what's going on in the finances part. One is the twenty eighteen audit. I'm, um, in the process, of course, you know, is it way behind or in the process of, um, completing the management discussion and analysis, which I have anticipated completed by tomorrow, if not by the end of this week. Um, and then they recently, um, about a week ago, sent over some more findings or some more questions that they have. So, I wanted to respond back to that so we can wrap that up by the end of this month and the twenty eighteen audit be complete and start the twenty nineteen audit. Because we're two years, but we're behind. Um, um, the, the other thing that I want to talk about is all of the laid off employees have been paid out. Uh, I will give you an updated spreadsheet. I have that spreadsheet on my computer, but I'm having to regenerate it, uh, so I can get it and format you. Uh, you can understand it's only about total vacation payout was about twenty-some thousand dollars. So, it wasn't a whole lot. Um, uh, the update on the fixed asset inventory, and I know this is your, your baby, Councilman Shure. Um, and I spoke with the clerk and she indicated that, um, from the attorney office, Councilwoman Ram had a copy of the contract sent over to the mayor's office. And as soon as he gets it back, he, and, and signed, he'll be signing, executing, then sent to, um, Tim Michener, the company, from the company that was awarded the contract. Um, the resolution has been signed and executed. And hopefully, the contract will be back, it over to the lawyers by tomorrow and it can be, we can move forward now. Um, and, um, I think you'll be happy to know that we paid for the police cars that, um, she, he's not here, we, we, we cut the check for the police cars in twenty nineteen budget, the two hundred some thousand dollars. We're just waiting on delivery date to give them that check. So, we did, we were able to accomplish that in the twenty nineteen fiscal year. So, um, I think though that, uh, when my conversation with Chief Green is that his intention is to use the equipment budget to, um, fully outfit the cars. So, we at least purchased all the vehicles. And, um, one, one final thing, I passed out a memo, not going to go into too much discussion, but I think it would be helpful, it was a budgetary matter of concern that turned out to be a legal matter. But I, um, I ran across two memos in my office that occurred while I was out. And I think you will, you will find it helpful and, um, and favorable for the council. So, if you just take iTunes to, to look over that, uh, I think it's self-explanatory and should cover everything that you need to give that to your, your legal counsel.
Did you give all stuffs?
Yes. Are there any other questions from this way at this time? Any other call?
No, Mr. President, um, um, when Ms. Wade comes, um, our tax collector is due on the same day or the, or the Tuesday after, or the meeting after?
Where I just put it in writing, uh.
Can we do that? Can we, can we get home?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Wade. All right, committee reports. Councilman Johnson, recreation committee.
Uh, no reports.
That goes with the law.
Uh, no reports, Mr. President. All I want to say is that, uh, Ward eight, we are so sorry for the trash and stuff that we got to get piled up. I hope the workers can work real soon. Uh, I don't understand it, but I guess everything will come together pretty soon. Uh, I don't feel like this situation have to suffer like they usually are doing, um, caused of this. I hope we will come together soon later to solve this problem. It's gonna make no sense at all, but, uh, all I can say is we just hope we all come together to get this problem solved real soon. But there's no report on the recreation and, uh, just good night.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Community development.
Um, I have no community development report. I've, in my announcements, um, covered everything. I won't remind anybody about the little monster march, um, Halloween. Um, that it's always so cute and then there'll be a little Halloween party at the library. So, that's always so much fun. Some cute little mars, uh, monsters march. I like to dress up in that same blue group, which possibly come up here and, um, just, just have fun Halloween activities with them. Um, and, and more too, like Councilman Johnson, he is around, I'm sorry for, for the, the trash accumulating on the sides of the road and, uh, and, and just a pile and a gas. And people, it seems like there is this purposeful laying of mattresses and things like that that people know are not allowed in places that not even, um, it's, it's not, it, it is not residents putting them out in front of their homes to be laid off. There is a place, one little area where there's a seating area, recreational area, we're on the little, because they have like five mattresses piled up there. And that was just for hatefulness. And so, um, it keeps the people from enjoying it. And I'm gonna have to just get those piled off, get up, you know, someone, I pay somebody to haul them off to the dump. Um, anyway, uh, um, the bad thing about it, it makes me suspect all sorts of things that makes me feel bad for it and suspect it. That's the bad thing about that. Um, but anyway, uh, hopefully, we will have this resolved one way or another pretty quickly. And, um, I, I, but I need to get my cameras. I don't know where they are. I don't know who moved them, but I need to get them back. So, Mr. President, I'm gonna have to invest your help in that. I've got at least six of them. I know I had to get three of them. Mr. Van Gavro brought them. And I, I, and I just got the, the people in a subdivision, they, their neighborhood association managed to get them. So, thank you, because I need to get them put up in areas of, of trouble, um, you know, to minimize that. So, and, and some of these places, one of these areas, there's a new business there. A new manufacturing business that employs, um, a good little new people. And anyway, that's just not, not good at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Councilman Randolph.
Well, um, no report, but, uh, Mr. President, I, I hope that we could, uh, maybe take a look at, um, the state of the prisons, if they come in here, uh, and help out with our trash. Because we can't hide them at a low cost. And they'll come out of work at least out of camp. These are not, um, high criminals, violent criminals and stuff like that. And we, we, we might want to take a look at that and, uh, because, uh, I, I got, um, contact under the, the ward, assistant ward, I think. Okay. But that's something we need to really, really, uh, look into. And, um, uh, because our city is, is, uh, messy. People up in the high up, excellent, don't even care if it's in a mess. Because they orchestrated this mess and, and it just bad, uh, you know? The council people had to hire people to pick up trash in your ward. Man, that is crazy. I, I, I get so angry. I've had to call a man from Birmingham, come and sell, pick up the trash.
Ray Brown.
This, this is crazy, y'all. A man from Birmingham had to come way down here and pick up trash because, uh, you know, we, we gotta do better. We gotta do better. And I, I, I'll tell you, I've, I've been, I bought, uh, I know people are trying to make an issue out of it, but I bought them weed either, uh, with city money. Yeah, I did. So, y'all go ahead and say it, with city money. And what I'm doing since I don't have nobody to cut my vacant lots, I'm doing it myself. You know, I'm going around, it costs three hundred forty-nine dollars, three hundred forty-nine dollars. And the league said I could buy it because I'm using for city purposes. I'm not using to cut my bushes. I'm cutting the other folk bushes. So, we like to come together, you know? Maybe we just, I know people been cutting grass, come together, cutting cemetery and stuff like that. But we're gonna have to come together and, uh, maybe help each other out, uh, in each other's wards, you know? I don't mind coming to somebody else's ward and helping out, you know? You know, we just have, call a family day. You, you know, uh, Ward four, you my family, I'm Ward five, uh, Ward two, I mean, Ward three. You know, just a family day so people can come out and, and, and try to, uh, clean up our neighborhood, you know? But I'm gonna be quiet because the more I talk, I'm gonna have to pat my feet so I won't say that I shouldn't say. Uh, but, but I'm serious, y'all. We, we gotta, we gotta do better than that, I'm serious. We can't, uh, can't just let the trash go on, you know, not take care of. And then you people that put the trash down, you know, y'all ought to get a life, man. You, some people don't even have gummy candy. Cup of dog down from my house, he don't even have gummy candy. I seen him at the liquor store buying a filthy genie. I said, that is crazy. You, you buy some liquor and cigarettes, but you won't put no gummy candy at your house and you throwing across the street. That don't make no sense. We gotta set our priorities. People, you know, a lot of people that rent houses, you know, not all of them. Some people just don't have no, 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 no get up in because they saying, hey, none of my house. I ain't cut the grass. I ain't picking up no trash, you know? And that's what we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do better. But I'm gonna be quiet because I, I could go on and on and on and on. But anyway, folks, uh, y'all have a good day, you know? And like I said, just pray for our city, man. I, I'm telling you, I, I, I pray for our city, you know? Everybody pray, you know, prayer changes things, you know? I'm, I'm telling you, prayer changes things. You, 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 y'all think, uh, stuff that's going on is not noted, not being noted? Yeah. But anyway, I'm gonna be quiet, like I said, before I say something I shouldn't say. Because I know my wife looking at the TV and say, please shut up.
Thank you, Councilman Randolph. I'm in a spread committee, uh, Councilman Bo Lain Strong. Public safety committee, uh, we will have a brief public safety committee tomorrow at five o'clock to review the resumes of the police chief, uh, the one who submitted, uh, for the position of police chief tomorrow at five o'clock. During that time, we will review the resumes and also arrange interview times for, uh, for the applicants. Also, Councilmembers, I'm gonna ask you if you would, please give a donation to Officer Gibson, that one who was, uh, had accident. I think as a council, I think we need to send him something as a collective group. I do have his address, uh, part of the next council meeting. If you would, just put together a package, um, definitely need to, uh, give him something because it's in service to me that hurt. And also would like, uh, with Councilman Aaron, I guess, congratulations, that's the five chief. And with that said, Public Works and General Services Committee, Councilman Shure.
I'm sure that that's over. It appears that the majority of the people that are not working is from the public works, general services, and shop. Which actually that is a way concerning lines. Talking about garbage and trash, I've been talking about garbage and trash for three years. And I've been, I mean, this is something I've been hopping on for three years about. The state of our city, the state of our city is in a glorious condition. It is so sad, so unfortunate that we are playing garbage and trash. We have ordinance, but they're not in force, and therefore people, they throw their nose at the city government. You know, we have ordinance that requires people to have garbage receptacles to discard their household garbage. But I can assure you, there is a way, not a citizen. their household garbage, but I can assure you, there is a great number of citizens that totally ignore that ordinance. Until we put some real treatment to our ordinance, starting forcing that, we're gonna continue to play with this garbage and this infestation of household garbage. And the only thing we do every twice a month is get up here and talk about it. It's time for us to stop talking, it's time for us to start doing something about it. And I know it can't be done simply by this council, cause that's not our job, run this city. It is the executive branch government, John, run the city, we need to make sure that they have what they need to run this city. If they don't have what they need to run this city, then we can have no other responsibility to run this city. It is a fact that we need a whole lot of things in this city. There's a whole lot of things that we just totally just ignore. But it's time of time, we gotta start ignoring this, start making these changes and do something. You know, when, when we get back up to the staff of personnel, we need to make sure there's a person in charge, one line locking on doors. Ma'am, sir, where's your garbage can? That's the only way we know resolve this, y'all. We're not gonna resolve by ready people, fines. We have to make sure that we can identify those people who don't have garbage cans, so that we can live, I mean, just factoring, find them for being in violation. Although we will give them an opportunity to correct it, but if they don't, they will still pay it. That will come with them not being in violation, they're not gonna shoot you in time. In time, this garbage infestation will be gone. That's the only way it's gonna be cured. I would pray that when you have your exposure in the room that you spoke on that night, that this is somebody concerned, you were expressed in America.
Uh, I'd give a councilman some contact.
Just, just, just remove that infestation of garbage. And we need to help, the executive branch government be concerned about this, and more important, something about it. Because we have council people, we own it twice a month. We own it twice a month, yeah, we in charge of the resources, the partners, the towns of the people. And if the executive branch don't have what they need, consider that we cannot hold them responsible, their legislative powers. We have to make sure that everything is in place in order for them to do their job. When you're talking about public works, general services, these guys need equipment to do their job. They need equipment to cut grass, they need equipment to get down in these ditches, they need, they need a side cutter, side cutter we don't have. Fortunately, the county has one there, and then if it's working, they will allow the city to use it. And in between time, we just got to do best we can with what we got. And until we start impacting it, and then these changes, nothing's gonna change. And, and when it comes to crime, when you see a little man walking down the street, vehicle, thirty-six year old TV on the back, call the police. No, no, I mean, let's not just say, well, ain't mine, it's my TV. You turn around, you're your TV, last thing, so there's no concern of yours. Call the reporter. We need to store it. And I, and I pray that, that it will pay up in Birmingham, people start talking, because you might have made a place, and we knew that mother, they open, we live there, I'm pointing to the same, but it's true, that is the way crime get resolved. So I'm gonna ask this council to keep cupcakes in their prayer, go to the issue, and say return to a fact, to the fact. In between time, let's continue, pray about that work, it's useless. You can get on your knees and pray all you want to, but if you know the work, when things happen, it ain't gonna change. And that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Sure, then, in fact, Councilwoman Jackson.
I'd like to say that the children in family, um, fourth night annual night hope, um, if you get, Wednesday, April first, twenty-twenty, if you mark your calendars, Mr. Jackson went up ahead and secured that date, um, last year after the year of the last. Um, so if you put that down, Wednesday, April first, we're asking that, um, all the churches come out and join us for that night hope. There's more of the report, and I'll be having a meeting with all of their, all of their members, um, soon, but the date has already been set. I want to say that, um, I was excited tonight, because, um, the council was unanimous on their vote for the, uh, project. Unanimous in a way that wasn't about politics, but in a way that was all about leadership and who was best for the position. I think some of the members of the Public Safety, um, team and, uh, safety committee and some of the members that were able to attend all said it best, that, um, all of the, um, advocates were great, um, but Chief Grant was exceptional and they've, um, issued advice to the rates. And so, it was so good to see that there was a unanimous vote in that area. Um, that shows that this council as a body is looking forward to great things and trying to improve. Um, we all have short faults and we, we all have shortcomings, but our desire, when we meet, is to do the business of the city. And if we would have other parties who just meet us that way, then we would be in a greater position, a better position. And so, I thank you all for allowing me to serve, if you, thank God that we're, where we are and that he knows, but thank you to the citizens of ward three for allowing me to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Uh, finance committee, uh, we will have our first budget here on Thursday at five o'clock and Friday at, Friday at twelve o'clock. Our budget is again Thursday, tomorrow, I mean, Thursday at, uh, five and Friday at twelve o'clock. All right, uh, public building committee, Councilwoman.
Yes, um, I want to say, I want to thank the committee, uh, for what we, we've been doing, uh, trying to get the city buildings opening, things going in the city itself. Also, I have one more project that we need to, uh, we've been working on this for the last two years, to finish up the ceramic. That's our last project in Dallas cabinet building. We need to, uh, find how we need to, uh, get, uh, open up another claim, uh, to try to get the, uh, finish up the floor and, uh, the ceramic. Floor needs to be finished in the wires. So, the level was finished. So we need to work on that, we need to find out how we need to go forward with that. Also, I want to, uh, this is part of the, and I want to say this to the citizen too. Uh, we don't want you to think that we're not working on the lights. We constantly have lights to go out in our city, on main, on main areas. And, uh, we, uh, was asked, uh, we asked before to relocate someone to come out and put the switch boxes in, uh, to put up to, to get the lights back operating. A lot of citizens think we don't, we are not trying to do anything up here, but I just want, I, I hear them, I hear them loud and clear, that they need the tractor lights, we need them fixed. You wanna say something, Ms. Wood?
That reminded me that I've got a tractor light up on Cahaba Road in Medical Center Parkway that's crooked, messed up, it was stolen. That's what that reminded me of, I mean, it's fixed, it's fallen down, I don't know what to do about it.
Then, um, I just want the citizen to know that we, we, we are still working on it, we, we doing what we can. And also, I want to let, uh, President Blue, I was supposed to bring, this is under, uh, dealing with the streets, I have two contracts. Talking about, um, uh, yes, I have two contracts where I've been trying to get, uh, this work repaired in, uh, this bag, um, over there by Donald Pizza, that, uh, we have a couple of big, large portfolios on that area, that is my, that is the area that I represent, is on Ward seven. And, um, I have a contract for that, and also I have another contract for an area that, um, I have, uh, been trying to get repaired. Finally, I'm getting a chance to move over in this area, dealing with, uh, Crestwood Drive and the intersection of Ruthwood Drive, and also Chris Haven in the intersection of Ruth. And, uh, I need to, you know, they say bring the contract before the council, we get a vote.
If we broke, I thought we voted on that.
No, we, we never did, because we didn't have the contract. So I have the contract and I have all of the, uh, the license and insurance, everything that, uh, needs to be done, um, to move forward with this. Yes, I would like to put a motion on the floor that I, uh, my contracts were, were in place to be moved forward.
Do we have a sound?
Say it.
Senator Paul, this is, this is.
President Blue.
Yes.
Councilman Boleen, Councilwoman Younger.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson.
I'm saying.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman LaShaw.
What sorts of funds have been used for this? What sorts of funds?
It's changed, uh, we brought before the council back, and we got out of gas cap, the fourteen thousand, and I, when we voted on.
Gas cap?
Yeah, and, uh, my other contract is out of my oil lease of seven thousand and eight hundred.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, all right, what contracts are over? Anything else?
Um, no, I just want to thank, uh, with my closing remarks, I just want to thank the, uh, the elected officials for being present with the event that we had in, uh, this weekend. And I want to thank all the guests, uh, the judges, and especially Dwight Brown, come all the way from Mobile to, uh, explain to us how important it is to keep our community safe. And it takes, it takes the people that live in the community to be a part of this change in our community. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, President Blue, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Angie Benjamin, and Councilwoman Younger for being supportive of this event, because it's important in all of our wards that we take leadership when we have these meetings, uh, because we want to bring changes in our community. And, uh, just want to tell the citizen of Ward seven, we will have a ward meet, it will be next month, uh, and I will, uh, make that announcement.
All right, you better thank you, woman.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Is this, is this quick, when you get to the very end of this, that I need to forward this, because we need to vote on this contract, because we'd already voted on it, you are here.
Next committee, uh, education committee.
Yeah, that's right.
Education committee. After that, we just come, come back and vote on it.
Uh, I'm gonna do just a few closing remarks. This, uh, council members, just please, please be reminded, um, on what I talked about on yesterday concerning an administrative assistant contracting a person to be in our office, so that we're reconnected to our constituency. Um, um, they miss us in a very huge way, and we should be feeling the same. So please, um, as, uh, President Blue goes throughout the, the meeting, I'm still saying, let's contract a person and move on. Uh, Councilwoman Randolph said we gotta do better, and, and I'm gonna add to that, we must move on with the business of the city itself. So we have to contract some services, uh, we have to contract it for this or contract it for that. We must move on. The business of the city, uh, has to move on. Uh, I want to remind everyone of the, uh, Ward Four, when you see brush up, this is just a brush up, so it don't last long at all. And then we'll go into our annual stop the violence, uh, community gathering. And the mall walk, you all let me know whether you can do twelve or five, well, Councilman, Councilman Johnson, get on you, you can't do five.
No, I can do five.
Okay.
I was saying.
Twelve or five, you all let me know whether you all can do, uh, twelve lunchtime or, uh, five o'clock PM on November fourth, I would appreciate it if you would, uh, just do a mall walk, uh, I got a few ideas that, that, uh, the, uh, the merchants might be open to, to bring some more, um, uh, lightness to the mall. And that is it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, I, I forget the day, but in the last meeting, um, we had voted, um, of the YMCA, the YMCA, the amount that we had collected for the lodging tax that we had, I'm just going to call it a natural, the way it has set aside, that we got in place to wipe. Um, one of the questions that the motion passed, but one of the questions that had come up was that we cannot just give the money to the Y since it's a membership corporation. So, but, but they are going to be performing the, um, the, with the links, they are going to be performing step up program that Dr. Williams talked about. And this will allow them to do that. So without this, they have already, and I don't know if you know this, um, Mr. Speedy's no longer working at the Y itself, because they decided in their original organization, they are working with Montgomery to try to realign, to get all the, um, their ducks in a row, their financial ducks in a row. And Montgomery is trying to help save the Y here, so they're doing everything they needed to do. They needed to get rid of his new salary, uh-huh. He's working in Montgomery, he's coming over like once a week, yeah, to help. But, um, they've essentially absorbed his salary, they're trying to help the seven Y out. So we've got consideration coming in, you know, any kind of things in other way. Um, but this will allow them to provide the services to the third, fourth, and fifth riders, um, to help them perform better. So here's the, here's the, the, um, contract for your perusal. So I'm, I'd like to ask for a vote on that.
Do we have a motion, put a motion on the floor?
That is the motion.
Okay, we have the second.
Second.
Second, Councilman.
This, um, is this, tell me what this is, this is for the third, fourth, and fifth ride? Or this is something else?
Now, this is for the third, fourth, and fifth ride, step up program. To provide the tutor an extra help in the classroom and in the Y.
So we're gonna vote on it with the notion that fourth and fifth ride are included, or?
Yes, it's third, fourth, and fifth ride. No, it's, it's third, fourth, and fifth ride.
Okay.
Yeah, I just see third ride, okay.
Do, you have, then the vote of the session? Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Younger.
Yes.
Is, um, is this where we will have to make a payment for this?
Yes, this is where they will get to pay that, for the, the lodging tax money.
Oh, it's gonna come out, this, this is supposed to come out of the lodging tax?
Right.
Whenever you get something like the Y or the boy scout, the task of getting the private service that they have to buy.
Right. What's the amount of money?
What amount of money you talking about?
So what we're doing is restoring the lodging tax to the Y with this.
Right. Well, and we're, and we're, we're, no, we, this is, instead of just giving them the money to pay the light bill, they're gonna pay the light bill with someone else, but we'll give them this money to, we'll give them that money to, to do this program. So they have to take the money that they will do this program with, to, to keep on the lights, to pay the utility. So with this money that they would have, have done that with, they're paying that light bill with, we will give them money to do this program.
I hope, we did. Since that we will restore the likely contribution of lodging tax to the Y.
Well, I think that we're gonna do that, but that's a separate issue, that we got to, we got to deal with this, because we need to go ahead and get this program, you know, going, that's one of the reasons that I brought it up when Dr. Williams was here. Incidentally, she had no idea I was gonna bring it up while she was here. But that's one of the reasons, because they haven't agreed with the, they want them to go ahead and get it going as soon as possible. You know, the first part of the year is almost gone. So they, they want them to go ahead and start working with the children, with their reading and their math, those are two pretty good things, so.
Councilwoman Thompson, Councilwoman.
So you're telling us that, that, that what you have came before and voted on, the twenty, what, twenty-eight thousand dollars, the twenty-eight thousand dollars that you voted, that you did to vote on, to pay the, the light bill, you're not going to pay the light bill with the twenty-eight thousand dollars?
We can, they have to.
You have to do a contract first.
I know that, but I, let me finish saying what I was gonna say first, um, cause I want to get an understanding. You are now saying that the IRM money, that, uh, you're gonna, we're going another, doing the contract for, for kids, for the after-school program?
Because what they had to do was, in order to keep the lights on, they had to take the money that they had set aside to do that, to pay the light bill. So they got to replace that money if they're going to do that program.
Oh, okay, I have so much more.
So.
I was still at this council.
If that is the explanation that they gave, I don't believe that they took from this program to pay the light bill, but I, I, I do believe there is a light bill that needs to be paid, and it has been voted on. I want to ask, um, I want to ask Madam Clerk, if she remember, did we vote to, um, reallocate the money? 'Cause we're talking, we're talking about several things today, and we're moving fast on something we just received. Did we vote to reallocate the money to the Y?
To the bill of the lodging tax?
Bill of the lodging tax. We did not do that, correct? Okay, so straight me out now, 'cause I don't wanna be, okay, straight me out on that part, so we did not do that. We did vote to, uh, the body, the, the body did vote on the power bill for Alabama Power. All right, and this right here, I just wanna know the amount for third, fourth, and fifth grade, what is the amount of the program, Councilwoman? Um, 'cause the, the contract.
It's a lot more than this, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more, I didn't fill it in, it's a lot more than this, but they're just asking for the amount. Essentially, they need to be able to pay the power bill, but, but they had to take the money out of, the step up program is a lot more than what the power bill is. I don't know, they're not asking us to fund the whole program.
I got you, but they're just asking the Y.
Well, that's what, we have to fill that in, I don't know what the amount, uh, that they actually need to restore is. That's like, if I have.
Is that the amount of the front of the sample?
No, I didn't ask, she didn't say. But, you know, it's if I have, you know, I, I mean, just breaking it down into simplistic things, if I've got five hundred dollars to pay my rent, and then I have a medical emergency with something, and I have to take forty dollars out, and I, you know, I've gotta get forty dollars from somewhere else to pay my rent, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, anyway, it's, um, we can't legally pay the light bill, but we can legally help them with the step up program. So it's six one half dozen the other, it's just semantics. We, we voted to pay the light bill, but the law says we can't pay the light bill, so.
Council, Councilwoman, are you asking for a vote, absolute vote tonight? I heard the president say he wasn't here the last time, I know I wasn't here, um, the contract doesn't have any relevant information.
Like, what, what?
Like how much we're actually paying over the year, are, are we gonna pay them, you know, sixty thousand dollars, or we gonna pay them thirty thousand dollars?
Well, we voted last, in the last meeting, we voted to give the city not a member, what they're, what.
Okay, we did wish for our safety tonight, that we were told that we couldn't do that, um, that we couldn't pay the light bill. And so I, I would, if I'm going to, I need more time. You don't have to, you don't have to.
Yeah, I know you don't have to, but, but I don't know, what they're just asking for is the amount that we allocated for them, for that. So whatever amount that we, I'm asking to put in this contract, whatever amount we approved that I asked them.
But I, oh, my thing, it didn't really help, Councilwoman. Um, I was, I was consulting with Councilwoman Stewart because he made the motion. He, he didn't make a motion to pay the power bill, he, he made a motion to allocate thirty-five thousand into a line to help the Y.
All right, well, let's just give thirty-five thousand dollars, all right, thirty-five thousand dollars to the Y, that's what's in that.
It was already, and I think it passed, the motion passed, my.
Yeah, but I, let me check.
It passed, because it did, it did, I checked my vote. Which I voted passed, yeah.
It passed. All right, look, look, let me say, this was off or not, the only thing we need to do this, this, is to just approve a contract for, for this, just to contract your services. The motion to, to, to give the Y the money's already passed, I didn't realize that it worked for the light.
I had to remember, I had to.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin, this is just to, I, I just have got the contract, okay? So I'm gonna put thirty-five thousand dollars, because that is what was, was the motion that, um, I'm just gonna add this in here.
And, and Madam Clerk, well, I put Dave, would it be reasonable to put this in here, that it should be made out? I, I have it, I'm, I did, Miss Kirk. As soon as I put it, see, early as practical day. Um, two things, let, um, I was just talking to the clerk, trying to be clear, because the minutes said for the power bill, so, so I might wanna make sure you clear that up. All right, hold on, the clerk.
Hold up, we didn't vote on the minutes, we didn't vote on the minutes, so.
All right, all right, we'll play with the minutes, so, I'm like, I'm out. John, let's make sure we clear the minutes, so.
There was some, there was some assesses during the plenary hearing on the community development, uh, committee, committee. When Ms. Maxwell and Mr. Speed came to ask that the council consider restoring the monthly lodging tax to help them out in their, um, management operation. And I think the assesses from that committee was to bring back the recommendation that we will restore the lodging tax back to the Y. That has been taken plain, because we've waited and not paid, so it's still being taken, still in memory. Broke off for the contract.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin, Councilwoman Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
I wasn't here for the initial vote, and, uh, same.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
This is, and amount is going into this blank.
Thirty-five, yes.
Councilwoman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas? Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes. Do I have a motion for a term? You just, yeah.